Together in the back, we're thinking, trying to get council photo done, group photo tonight. Thank you, Kelly, for being here for that. Chip, do you want to stall or something so the camera doesn't just sit here on me?
Sure.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Presidents Zwicker, council members, Chip Vincent from Community and Economic Development Department. Let me just start off by saying the issue of appeals is a challenging issue for any council sitting in review of decisions and recommendations that are made by their department and their hearing examiner. Probably one of the most contentious issues for councils is the difference between your traditional role as a legislative body to set policy direction for the city as compared with your quasi judicial role in sitting in review of appeals that come from the hearing examiner. And in the quasi judicial role, you can't hear ex parte communication. You can't talk to your citizens in your community the way you typically can on legislative issues. So it's really a challenge for elected officials to be able to draw the real hard lines that need to be drawn to have closed record appeals, to not consider information that is outside of the record that's presented by the hearing examiner, excuse me, based on the public record that he has had. A number of communities have dealt with this challenging issue, and there's basically two opportunities council has. They can either continue to hear those quasi judicial appeals based on the closed record that's provided by the hearing examiner and his decision and the body of information that's embedded within that in terms of the record of the public hearing itself, or they can choose to have hearing examiner decisions appealed to Superior Court and simply bypass the council process altogether. There's interesting benefits and costs to both of those. For councils, it puts them out of, you know, the quasi judicial process when it goes directly to court. The downside of that is, and I'm speaking now from professional experience, is that once councils have stopped being the reviewing authority for the hearing examiner on appeals, you're not as connected to the policies and the comprehensive plan nor your development regulations because you don't get a sense of how they're actually working out there in the community. By sitting as a body reviewing decisions where we have competing perspectives that come before the examiner and then the council, you have the opportunity to get a sense of how are these rules that we adopt in the legislative process actually being applied and being implemented and how do they affect our citizenry. So there's a benefit that's being lost when we go directly to it. But on the flip side of it is, is obviously, these are tough issues.
Come on up, Larry.
Come join us, Larry. Just giving you, so we're kind of shooting, we're tightening up the schedule tonight, so we'd like to wrap up your presentation by 6:00, which I think should probably be fine for you unless you get long-winded on us again. Yes, exactly. Chip's giving us a nice little overview of what it is we do and don't do as a council, and now we'll go with you.
So I will summarize my comments while Larry's getting ready here. Just simply say, it's really a policy choice of the council. If you want to be a quasi judicial body and review the decisions based on the hearing examiner, or allow Superior Court to review those decisions, and there's pros and cons to both sides, and not all communities do it the same way. And so, anyway, with that, I will introduce our city attorney, Larry Warren.
Thank you, Chip.
And I suggest we forgive Mr. Warren for being late because he had to go home and get his yellow tie.
Actually, I'm late because I decided to climb the stairs as part of the move order.
Good for you. Very well done.
If I seem to be gasping a little bit, I found out that I'm not in stair shape yet. The basis of the appeals to the city council is the Regulatory Reform Act, and it goes together with Land Use Petition Act appeals. They're very tightly structured and timed, and the structure is such that the city government can, you have to have a hearing examiner, or a plaintiff commission, or some other initial appeal body, or initial hearing body, who then establishes a record. And then from there, the city has an election. You can either elect, according to the language of the statute, to provide an appeal of no more than one consolidated open record hearing, that's the initial hearing that I was talking about, and then you need not provide for any other appeals and may provide an appeal for some of the project decisions. If the appeals provided for after the open record hearing, it shall be a closed record appeal before the single decision-making body or officer, and that's what we do now. So the hearing, excuse me, the hearing examiner establishes the record and it gets appealed to the city council. And there's nothing in here about doing some of your land use decisions by an open, or closed record appeal and some going to Superior Court. I think with a certain reading of the law, you could determine that certain types of appeals could go on directly to Superior Court and not others, but you could not choose between Appeal A of a land use, a rezon, let's say, and Item B of a rezon. You can't get the opportunity to elect which ones you want and which ones you don't. And that really relies, and by the way, I checked, I can find no cities that have such a system. I also did a case check. I was pretty sure there wasn't any case law, and I could find none.
So Larry, if I can, just to clarify and just make sure everybody's up to speed on that, kind of how this got here, is there's the overall overarching discussion about council doing the appeals and that type of stuff, and we can get there, but one of the things I wanted Larry to specifically check, to see if there was circumstances in which the council could pass on an appeal, knowing that for sure it was going to get appealed beyond us and not waste everybody's time. And that's kind of what I think that Larry's addressing, is that, no, we can't do a, accept some appeals, accept others. On a case-by-case basis, we could do it on a issue, specific, all issue handling, each issue the same way.
Right. And there's two other legal doctrines that play into my advice to the council on this topic. One is the appearance of fairness doctrine. So if you should take rezon appeal A and not appeal zone B, there would be at least a claim someone could make with an appearance of fairness issue. You must like or dislike party A because you sent them to Superior Court, and consequently, the other side of the argument, like or dislike party B. And the other is a more nuanced argument under the Constitution of equal protection. So how did these two people get equal protection of the law, party A with their rezon appeal and party B with their rezon appeal? So particularly if you lost and you got bypassed on the city council, you lost in Superior Court, and you thought you would have won in front of the city council with the burdens of proof shifting as you go up on appeal, they could say, I didn't really get a fair shot at the law. So trying to meld all three of those doctrines together, the closed record appeal election the city council can make, the appearance of fairness doctrine and the infection doctrine, it would appear to me that you have to either take or not take classes of appeals. You can't say, this one's going to go on to appeal and we just can't hear it.
Ms. Brer.
That's what I just wanted to clarify. So you can't categorize and say, we'll take these at the council and these then will go on to court, depending on what?
That's a more difficult decision. There's no case authority on that, but the way we structure our appeals right now, they're separated by classes. And so there, and Chip and I had an opportunity to talk about a little bit this afternoon about his belief that this might separate the council from its policymaking authority and not understand the issues that were really the big issues of the day, or the hot button issues of the day. There's always that at play, but there may be certain types of decisions that really would not arise to the policy level. For example, if we have an administrative appeal, regular administrative appeal, that has an internal administrative appeal, and then it goes on to the hearing examiner, there's not a further right of appeal to the city council because they've had their closed record appeal before the hearing examiner. Now, those are very few and far between, but in the spirit and nature of the regulatory reform, we have to keep that single closed record appeal. So that's why that particular instance, we have appeal on to Superior Court. Now, you might find that something that needs, ultimately needs, decision within the city would be an administrative matter that could be done, say, by one of Chip's subordinates that was appealable to Chip, and then Chip's decision could be appealable to the hearing examiner. Well, then we would have had the one closed record appeal before the hearing examiner, and it could go on to Superior Court. So we're splitting some fairly fine hairs in an area that's not been fully defined by case law. In fact, it's not been defined at all by case law, except for some hints about how structured this is, because under the Land Use Petition Act, if you don't appeal within a certain number of days, you're out, and it's a very short time period, 20 days, and you have to appeal. Even the city, if it doesn't agree with the decision, has to appeal within 20 days. So that's very structured, and the intent purposes behind these statutes were to make quick and definite final decisions on these various land use matters. So that's kind of, I tried to keep it brief.
And yeah, so council, my question basically has been answered, no, you can't do it that way, which was try to get the option to pass on ones that we've seen. So this leaves the question in front of us, which we'd like to hear if it's worth continuing on discussion of either it just stays the way it is, we keep doing things as we are, or if we want to get rid of council hearing appeals. And I think that there's pros and cons on both of that. I think Randy and Ed and I have been through a couple of recent ones that actually kind of illustrated both points, certainty of that it was going on beyond us, but Randy did bring, you know, a good perspective on the last one of past council decisions, and was able to bring that to bear on the decision. He still ended up in the same place, they're most likely moving past us and what we did. And, you know, and I know on the council agendas, we put that the reasoning for it is it's inexpensive, you know, easy way for an appeal, which, you know, and I think we had that one, we had three attorneys sitting here, and it took all afternoon, I'm not positive inexpensive is quite the right word, especially when you know that moves on. But like I said, my question was answered in the negative, which was just could we build in the option? So it's kind of to you guys if we want to go anywhere else with it.
Mr. President.
Mr. Taylor.
My, and I haven't been on Planet in Development in some years, but I do understand the, you know, the concern about this. I guess for me, what I'm interested in wanting to make sure that we're not doing is making this more difficult for our residents. It sounds as if this is a service that we're providing as a city, and granted, we don't nail it to the tune of happiness, glee, and joy and the outcomes all the time, but I think we have a pretty good track record historically in terms of the decisions that we've made, the ones that I'm familiar with.
Councilmember Brer.
Well, King Parker was here. He strongly believed that it was really the duty of the council to be able to hear, to hear the appeals and for cost savings for that connection with the community and, you know, he felt that we shouldn't make it so onerous for the appellant that, you know, that they can't afford to do it. Because although you might have had attorneys, we've also had appeals where there aren't attorneys. It's just members of the community. So I believe we should keep it the way we are.
Well, perhaps my colleagues have sort of changed my mind on this. I went into this thinking that I was ready, once again, as, King Parker and I used to debate this. I've always thought, on the negative side, the problem with us doing the quasi judicial appeals is that there's some point in the life of each project where we start to think that it's a possibility that it's going to go to a quasi judicial hearing, and we all start having to question whether we can talk freely with citizens on different parts, on different sides of issues, and, you know, it often leads to confusion on the part of the citizenry, and then they can feel like we're not doing the most essential job of all, which is communicating openly with them. But, and then, in the last couple of appeals, just like Mr. Zwicker said, it just seemed like we had so many attorneys in the room, and I thought, oh, people are going to pay for all these attorneys, and then they're going to pay for them again in Superior Court. So what service are we doing? But if it, in fact, if we're just as likely to see appeals amongst citizens where they don't have attorneys and we can, in fact, provide a service, you know, then I guess I'm okay with that. And perhaps I, you know, I'd taken a long break from planning and development, and the first couple of appeals that I sat in were ones that looked like they were going to go right through to Superior Court, and we were just taking the time of a lot of attorneys setting the stage for their next round. So if, you know, I guess I'd be willing to see, you know, to do more of these and see if it makes sense. Yeah, so I guess I'm open-minded on it.
Mr. Chair, just for a point of reference, the Horn rezon that you heard where all the attorneys were involved, has not been appealed, so it's not to your level.
Yeah. And in fact, they told us they have chosen not to appeal it further than the city council.
Okay.
Wow. Mr. Chair. This sounds like this, these last couple of appeals seem more like an exception more than the rule based upon what we've experienced historically. Is that a fair statement, Chip?
They have, they've been tough, but frankly, all appeals are tough. Anytime you have, you know, citizens and people that want to, you know, develop based under the rules, it's, you know, it's challenging. These have been, you know, it's interesting, the difference between appeal cases where you have citizens and property owners involved versus citizens and property owners with their attorneys involved. You know, when the attorneys are involved, it seems to change the dynamic of the hearings that we have.
They certainly become more formal.
Yeah.
I think historically, first off, reflecting back quite a ways, I first proposed the hearing examiner system to the city of Renton, actually before the enabling statute was passed, trying to keep the disputes as much as possible within City Hall, where people felt like they had access to their elected representatives, and also to limit expense on the city's part, because there's a fair amount of staff time that goes into it. As things have become more sophisticated, I'm not sure that that benefit is entirely being appreciated by the city, but we still have a place where the citizens can address their grievances to their local government, and they seem more satisfied, from my experience, with the results here than they do if they get it out of a Superior Court. It also intimidates a certain number of citizens. The flip side is exactly what Mr. Corman was talking about, and that is you get into an unusual role where you're supposed to be approachable by your constituents, and they can talk with you about the issues of the day. When you get into the quasi judicial setting, all of a sudden you have to go, wait, can't talk to you about that. It's an unusual role, somewhat uncomfortable, and not very well understood by the citizenry. So those are kind of the playoff, as I see, the countervailing forces here that you're discussing. But we've approached this issue, I think this is the third or fourth time, and the council has always stayed with the game. And there have been times when I would have appreciated it being in Superior Court because of the tensions that were created by the particular appeal. But there are benefits to the council also being informed of the particular issues of the day, and maybe it would be incumbent upon Chip and I to keep the council well informed if the case went on to Superior Court, if you should change the system, but you really wouldn't get quite the same feeling.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, the key was to see if we could build an option into it. It wasn't necessarily to scrap the system, it's just that we're seeing some situations where it wasn't necessarily a cost saving, it wasn't in the best interest and that type of thing. But I think that with that being answered, no, is I don't, I'm not seeing anything that rises to the level of scrap the system just because of the last few that we had, so.
Mr. Chair, yeah, I was going to ask Mr. Warren, I guess would the one mechanism be if both parties chose to bypass the city appeal?
I've never seen that happen. I guess they could stipulate, and we could have the council sign off on it.
Yeah, we'd have to agree.
We'd have to join in with them and put it into Superior Court. We've never seen that happen.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I'm trying to think through whether they'd want to do that.
Excuse me, but let me just give you a little added reason why they probably would not want to do that, and that is both parties hone their arguments before the council, before they take it on stage, before the Superior Court.
Yeah, where they're mock trial or whatever.
It is in a way, and they kind of explore the positions of each party, then they know what the record is a little bit better when they go on into Superior Court, and then they know where they can attack or not. So this gives them a little bite at the apple, if you will.
And I had kind of thought along those same lines and was, but not really wanting to go down that path of where if we were doing some appeals or most appeals or that type of thing, and as you're saying, perhaps they could get together and decide to try to bypass us, but it would remain hours to decide if we wanted to do that. I didn't necessarily like putting the tool out there that if they thought we're going to try to bypass the council, even though we have to hear all the other appeals, we're going to try to band together and bypass. I still want us to have that control, and I think clearly the only way to have that control is that you have to go through council.
I'd have to do some research to really.
I don't really feel comfortable offering them that, because if we're going to be in the process, then I think we need to be consistent to be in the process. Oh, yeah, I'm seeing nods. We're good. Thank you, Larry. I appreciate your time on this, and we'll continue doing what we're doing. Thank you, Chip, for an ample introduction that had all pretty. You're next. Okay, remind you, Priti, we'll wrap it up at 6:30.
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Not trying to rush you.
Council President Zwicker, council members, I'm Priti Sridhar, the Communications Director for the city of Renton, and I'm actually here today to speak on behalf of every city department. This is a wonderful opportunity for me to talk about what we've been doing as a city to literally embrace the diversity of our community with a specific emphasis on the cultural diversity outreach that we've been conducting. But it's really beyond that and more than that, and I will share that with you. One of the things that I want to share is because of the fact that this is citywide and there's so much to share, please, if there's areas that you want to have, you know, more in-depth information, or you have questions as we go along, please don't hesitate to contact me, because almost every bullet that I have is a program, and it's got a lot that I can share. And I'm going to go through this as quickly as possible in respect of your time. And one of the first things I wanted to share is that we're actually very fortunate today to have with us in our audience Violet Escaville and Raleigh Pollentin. They represent our Filipino-American community, they are our community liaisons, and they've really been partners with us in a lot of the efforts we've had. And I had the opportunity to see them on Saturday at one of our various cultural events, and I was talking to them, and they said they would come here today. So a special thanks to them for being here.
Thank you.
So, you know, some of you may recognize this photograph. It's one that we've used a lot, and it just is a small capture of the diversity in our community. One of the most important things is that valuing our diversity and capitalizing on our diversity is one, is in our mission statement. It's part of the Renton Business Plan, it's part of the policy that you have set as we were making, you know, our direction for the future. So we value this very, very, take this very seriously, and it's very important for us that we integrate diversity in everything that we do. So following a council, you know, planning retreats several years ago, when this was established by you as a key component of the work we do, we took this to, you know, look at, what are some of the goals that we can establish as we go forward in making, you know, a statement and a mission statement a reality in what we actually do? So, you know, these are the goals that we established from, like I said, citywide and the administration, and my presentation will actually follow these areas of emphasis more closely than, you know, just focusing on departments, but you will see that. So clearly, you know, Renton is an all-inclusive city, and we wanted to make sure that we have opportunities for everybody, everyone in our community. It was important for us that as we did that, we built connections, we built trust with members of our community, and had, you know, a special focus, especially on some of the community members that we may not have been that active in serving in the past. For example, some of our limited English-speaking residents and some of our cultural and ethnic diverse groups. We wanted to make sure that all our city programs and services are accessible and are within reach by all members of our community. And then a really important goal was emergency preparedness. And I want to take you back to 2006 during the windstorms we had, and one of the very unfortunate incidents that happened during that windstorm were several incidents of carbon monoxide poisoning, even in our city. And that was an eye-opener for us, because one of the reasons that that happened was just a lack of connection with some of the communities where this was the normal thing to do. And so if it was cold, you know, they were bringing their barbecue or their stoves inside, and this caused this really unsafe situation. And so focusing on emergency preparedness was definitely a top priority as we were establishing our goals. And then to continue to say, you know, that we wanted to improve access to all our city programs. The other thing, keeping, you know, in keeping with building the connections, we also want to hear from our community. It's not just about a one-way traffic of providing the services, but we want to, you know, get them involved and engage them and involve them in what we do in the civic process. And then finally, it was something we wanted to do collectively and collaboratively to understand diversity, to celebrate diversity. I'm going to pause here and share with you something that happened on Saturday for a second, and to me, that was just such a wonderful aha moment. We had, among other things, a Cinco de Mayo celebration at St. Anthony's Parish on Saturday. And so I went to attend that, and one of our community liaisons, Julio Amador, has been involved in, you know, setting that up. And to my amazement, I saw Violet and Raleigh and the entire Filipino community there as part of the Cinco de Mayo celebration. So here it was, you know, the two communities that we've met coming together and actually having as their theme diversity. So to me, that was just such a wonderful, you know, moment to see that. So how did we go about doing this? Again, this is citywide, every department's taken this very seriously, but one of the things we did was we said, we want to create a network of leaders from our community so that we can talk, you know, they can be our liaison, hear from us what we're trying to do, but also bring to us what their community members are looking for. And then this was a creation of a group that was, would be an ongoing partnership, an ongoing relationship, really based on regular communications, and not a rigid group that was established and, you know, would be as it is. It's an open group where, you know, we encourage and we accept and we welcome the fact that today there are 25 people and tomorrow there may be 35, and that's the way it is. The other thing we did is we started really taking a specific effort to go out to the community, to go to festivals, to fairs, and, you know, having our presence there and sharing with them. And I think each one of you have been to one or more event or festival where, you know, either you've had a speaking role or you've had an opportunity to interact with the community, and that's, again, you know, us kind of being part of the community in a broader sense. We also, you know, as part of our services, each and every program and service that we have made it a special emphasis to say, can we integrate, can we look at ways that we can target, you know, groups that may not have had this opportunity before? And then, of course, as like I said, you know, the part about engaging, about involving and to learn from our community liaisons, you know, having them give us the voice of their preferences. And finally, the celebrations that, you know, we are. And finally, the celebrations that, you know, we are really getting good at. So here's the group, this group, just to remind all of you, we came together Feb. 25th, 2010, and we've done a lot since then, even before that, but certainly I want to capture some of the things we've done since then. So let's talk about emergency preparedness first, because clearly there was, you know, this was important because it was time-sensitive. So here are just, again, a sample of some of the things we've done. We started with a DVD on emergency preparedness, and we, first of all, we were able to get this DVD from, the original DVD from Seattle, we customized it for Renton. And then we had our community liaisons actually speak in their language and give an introduction so that their community members could hear from them on why this is important. Ever since, we've translated this and we've distributed thousands of copies. We've had several workshops and training with community groups. If some of you remember, we had an AmeriCorps intern, Rachel Myers, who was working with us. She went out to each and every community, worked with translators, worked with the members, provided translated information. So again, it was this one-on-one, going out there, sharing information. And then we had just recently, last month, the Emergency Preparedness Forum. And I'm going to come back to this with a little bit more detail, because this was another wonderful way where we invited members of the community, but to, not just to talk to them about tips and what they can do, but how they can work together to be part of the solution so that they would build networks and connections and, you know, be able to rely on each other in the event of an emergency where maybe we couldn't, you know, come to them as quickly as we'd like to. The other thing we did was the Neighborhood Information Displays. If you remember, in every school in our city, we've set up a display case where we can, in the event of an emergency, use the old-fashioned way of, you know, going out there with a poster and providing information on shelters, et cetera. This winter, we utilized this in more ways than one. These posters we had in different languages with the key information, plus we worked really closely to emphasize carbon monoxide, and we worked with Health Department, et cetera, because we did not want to repeat what we'd seen before. One of our members from the Hispanic-American community has taken all our training. He's a CERT volunteer, he's got his amateur radio training, and what he's doing with this is taking it back to his community. We had a project by the UW students who actually looked at what we can do to do more in terms of our limited English-speaking communities. They gave us a bunch of recommendations, and, you know, many of those we've implemented and the others we're on the process of. And again, really almost right hot off the press, we're doing CERT training for teens at Hazen High School. And again, this is a partnership with the school district, and the school, you know, determined who would attend the training, and as you can see from this picture and another one, one of the criteria was they would represent the diversity in our, in our community. Heart Month, again, another fabulous example. I put this under the heading of health and safety, because just like emergency preparedness, that's another core area that we need to be working on. You know, keeping our community safe and healthy is really important. We had so many different focused contacts that the, you know, Fire and Emergency Services made as their priority, from the Sikh temple to the Hispanic community, to DK Market right here, to the Ukrainian church, to the Vietnamese community. You know, in the matter of a month, there were over 10,000 contacts made citywide, over 1,500 members of our different communities. And again, the folks who were part of this from our communities cannot say enough to say thanks. And more than just getting their checkup done, we were able to identify areas of threat and then put them in touch with Valley and others. So this was just really wonderful, I would say, you know, top program nationally. If I was giving an award, I'd give all the awards here, so. Then let's talk about celebrating diversity, and in fact, I'm going to stop for just a second, because I could have done 25 slides on what I'm going to say in one sentence. Festivals. We've had so many festivals in our community. Like I said, Saturday was just one, just a couple days ago, we had the Calça Day Parade, we had Cinco de Mayo, we've had Polynesian Festival, we've had the Sakura Festival with Uwajimaya. The Filipino community is wonderful with their festivals, and we've also integrated some of these into what we do. Renton River Days, you know, every year, there's a new group that's participating. We had the Vietnamese members in the parade, we had the Chinese-American community, we had the Sikh community. So again, there's that, you know, growing, both our exposure to the festival in terms of us being there, but also, you know, the communities coming together and sharing with everybody else. Back to my slide, and the Renton History Museum has taken some really proactive steps from, you know, Native American history focus with the Duamish curriculum for the fourth graders, to storytelling, to celebrating, you know, various important festivals like Black History Month, getting speakers. They recently had the ESL exhibit in collaboration with RTC, and right now, they've got the Two by Two, which, where the students are reinterpreting history, and this is in collaboration with the Renton High School. So again, you know, every part of what we're doing, we're touching, you know, different elements of the community and learning. The Seattle International Film Festival, I mean, we're all counting down for it, and the first time ever, you know, last year, we had CIF come to Renton. Last year, we had 20 films, this year, we have 19 films in several different languages, representing several different countries. This year, for the first time, our community liaisons are actually, three of them are part of our host committee. Violet, who's here, is part of the host committee. We screened, and thanks to the help of the liaisons, we're able to bring, you know, special screenings for different films. So this year, we're going to be doing some focused screenings with the Spanish film, with the two Filipino films, and the Japanese film. So again, it's, you know, special for the community, it's special for us, and it's kind of coming together. The gala, if you remember from last year, was just such a wonderful event for everyone to come together, and I hope it's the same again this year. Talking about some of our citywide programs and services, again, I'm just giving you a snapshot and a sampling, and I know the administrators will tell me, why don't you talk about mine? But for instance, the Community Services Department, you know, from the recreation programs, there are specialized programs, there's a Special Olympics, there are special scholarships, vouchers for low-income communities, lifeguard t-shirts in different languages. A lot of what we do, we try to see that we make it available in different languages if needed. The Summer Lunch Program, very, very important and really treasured by members of our different Fire and Emergency Services has taken some really proactive steps to incorporate, you know, looking at the needs of our diverse communities as part of their curriculum. And so one of the things they've done is this national program called Partnering for Prevention, the FIRE 2020 Program, where they actually went to different groups, had focus groups, met with leaders of different communities, to try to determine, you know, where are some of the communities that are high risk? What are some of the things that they could identify to see why are there risks in terms of, you know, fire prevention and other efforts that might be existing? And then how can we make a difference in how we outreach, how we provide education to reduce these risks? So this is, you know, every firefighter in our department's involved with this, and again, the mutual learning and sharing is just amazing. Public Works, I mean, isn't that amazing to think of our Public Works Department taking the action? To give you a really small example, just recently, just as we're starting our construction work with Rainier Avenue, Public Works Department in collaboration with the Community Services reached out to the homeless community, because we have a large homeless community, again, you know, representing a lot of diversity on Rainier Avenue, to talk to them about construction, to talk to them about what would, what they could expect and how they can help. These images you see here are translated versions of our really world, nationally famous recycling program. So again, we've got the information available, and in addition, there's been targeted outreach to our multifamily residents on the recycling and the new program. Another new thing, and we'll be launching this with even more gusto in about a month, is all the water conservation programs that now we have access to from Seattle. There's a series of videos in different languages, we're going to be putting those on Channel 21 and linking from our website, and also making information available so that our community members can take advantage of the, you know, rebates and incentives and educational programs that we have available for them. And then the Clean Community Initiative that we launched recently, again, a way for us to help with code enforcement violations, help communities who might be, you know, affected, working with volunteer groups, you know, prevent illegal dumping. Now, I had to throw this in, because this is such a fabulous photograph, and it's not our cultural communities, but certainly the fact that Renton Airport is the most female-friendly airport in the country does speak for the diversity of everything we offer. Then let's move on to economic development, such an important focus of what we do in our city. As part of that program, we have the Small Business Development Center, and one of the focuses of the focal points of the Small Business Development Center is to provide confidential assistance, especially to businesses that have 500 or fewer employees. Some of the stats from last year, they served a total of about 115, nearly 115 clients, 45% being minority-owned businesses. So this is, again, talking about, you know, how have we done, these are programs, how have we done in terms of outreach and getting information back? You've seen the photo of the community liaison group. I just want to let you know that ever since we set up the group, we've had about two meetings a year with the entire group, talking about various issues. But in addition to that, we've done something to the tune of about monthly to bimonthly, you know, communications, newsletter type with emails, and several meetings where it's been about a specific issue, whether it's been emergency management, or it's been CIF, or it's been, you know, something very specific that some or all of the members have been interested in. When I go to the last slide, we really want to do this, you know, do much more of this, so. The other thing is, as part of, you know, the work we do from communications to reaching out to our media, we have an extensive ethnic media list. So many of the press releases that you receive, you can be rested short, are also going to various ethnic media groups. And again, the response is so amazing, because we do send it in English, but either if they have staff on board, if they need to, they translate it, or some magazines, such as the Asian Weekly, and, you know, there are others, their readers also, they target their community, but it's okay for them to use the articles in English. Again, I can tell you so many stories of folks saying, thank you for sending us this information. I think, you know, you might have seen these, these are two issues, one is the Chinese newspaper and the Northwest Asian, they actually did a full feature on Renton, which is amazing. And my favorite is, you know, Como TV has a Spanish-speaking TV affiliate, and a year and a half ago, they did a Renton Ahead of the Curve feature. But the favorite part is our community liaison ended up speaking for the city and how wonderful the city is. I mean, talk about a partnership. They also talked about emergency preparedness and that feature story. We've done a lot of translations. I always believe it's important to make things available in the most convenient way. But for me, what's also the success with this is not just translations and, you know, filling up our, you know, storage cabinet, but getting the information out to our community. So again, we've worked hard on that. Some of these I already mentioned to you, but, you know, there's, you know, whether it's a flyer for National Night Out, or it's an emphasis on fireworks prevention during Fourth of July. You know, as we can, we make stuff available, but more importantly, we try to get it out There's another aspect to how we work with the communities, and these are with groups. We have regular meetings with the Refugee Forum and the ESL Group, and here are other members like us who all are working towards the same goal, who are bringing, you know, their issues together so that collectively, we can find ways that we can work and connect better. This is something that, you know, you may have never thought about, but SAM's Club is a place where there's so much of their clientele represent diverse communities. So they've actually invited us almost every year to come and talk to their management group, as well as they have a diversity group, so that we could share what we do, what they do, how they can get their resources from, you know, take advantage, so that when they have customers, they can serve their customers better. Similarly, during the height of the Howard Hansen Dam situation, FAA has a Hispanic-American group within the organization, it's an employee group, and they invited us so that we could talk to them and share information on flood preparedness with them. We've had a lot of participation, the involvement. I mentioned, you know, certainly the big one, I would say, or the broad one, I would say, is the community liaison group, but as part of our pro-plan process, we actually had members of our community liaison group serve on that task force. As part of CIF, as I mentioned, on the host committee, we have members serve on that committee so that they can be, you know, part of the conversation. The Renton Municipal Arts Commission, you know, three of their 12 members represent the diversity in our community, and a major focus of the Arts and Cultural Master Plan is how to encourage the diversity and showcase it in our community. The Neighborhood Program, that's another great way where we are actually making connections with our neighbors and our members. They had last October a workshop with members, with the Neighborhood Liaisons and the members, where they talked about and focused on diversity. The Emergency Management Department works very closely with a group called the Regional Vulnerable Population Steering Committee, where again, they want to address what are some of the needs of some of our underserved populations, and what can we do so we can work together to address that? And the example I'd given earlier about the, you know, carbon monoxide outreach that we did this last winter storm was one of the things that came out of that. And then the Community Forum on Emergency Preparedness that I mentioned earlier, that was there last week, another wonderful opportunity, because it brought the groups, our diverse groups together with our general public, and was conversations. So very quickly, you know, we've, obviously, we've done a lot, and I haven't shared everything that we have, but I did want to keep in mind that this is an ongoing process, these are conversations that, you know, we build over time, it takes time to build these relationships and to sustain them. Some of the things that I have seen with the community liaison group, which is, you know, which is a pro and a con, is that the members change. Either they change because their role in their organizations change, or their priorities change, so sometimes it's, you know, someone new coming on board, bringing them, you know, kind of starting all over, or starting new. Some of the challenges we have seen is, first of all, not every community has the same needs, they have different needs, so it's not a one-size-fits-all, and some of the needs of some of our communities really is beyond the scope of what we do with city services. Yet, I think, you know, no Renton employee says no. They always say, we'll try and help you, we'll try and, you know, see what we can do for you. And, I mean, I could have said, no, I have said, no dedicated staff or resources, I should probably say, every employee in the City of Renton is a dedicated staff and resource to this, but unlike some other cities, we don't have departments or, you know, folk, people with just this effort as their primary focus. So what are some of the things we're going to try and do next? I just wanted to share a few different programs. The mayor had mentioned this at the, at his State of the City speech. There is a program that the Washington State Employment Services is very interested in, where they want to match, you know, see if there are opportunities for internships, where they can bring, you know, folks that they might have. This is out in the community, so it's out with the businesses and out with HR departments. So we're going to see what this means, can we do something, can we use our connections to, you know, provide more opportunities for people? Maybe they have limited English skills, but then they can learn, you know, as they have on-the-job training. Another thing that we want to do is to look at maybe establishing some kind of, you know, services for interpretation, so that it's not something we, you know, have to use every time, but it's a service we can offer and have more easy access to. Right now, we have services that we, you know, we look to, for instance, the Red Cross. The Police Department's actually considering a Citizen Academy, which will have a focus on the Hispanic community, so that should be really exciting. The Community Forum, the type we had last month, you know, that really lends itself to conversations on almost every topic. And so my hope is this is something we can do once every two or three months, bring all our community members together, bring topics where we focus on what's important to them, and have those conversations where, you know, we're kind of in small tables, and we have some big group discussion and some small group discussions, whether it's focused on... some small group discussions, whether it's focused on, you know, crime prevention, or better access to services, or, you know, graffiti prevention. There's so many different things that we know touch various different groups, and we want to work on that. Obviously, we want to continue all the work we've done with programs and services and more. We want to continue to engage our community and hear from them and see how we can collaboratively work on solutions. Sorry. And really continue, and continue to celebrate. I didn't have that. So, we want to continue to celebrate, because that's a way that, you know, we all learn from each other, and we all really enjoy what we have to bring to the table. So, this, like I said, is a snapshot. Please, you know, it's a time, if you have any questions on what we've shared to date, and what you would, you know, like us to continue to do as we go forward. One of our goals is to bring you more, you know, updates, more regular updates, maybe even some of the areas I've touched upon, to do more details as we go forward, so you can get a sense of the depth of the work we're doing here.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Taylor. Yes. Great information, Preeti. Really appreciate all the hard work you've done. I can say that I've seen a number of new things that you've incorporated here, and that does not go without me recognizing it and appreciating it. For the sake of time, I, you know, I won't present my questions to you. I would love a copy of the PowerPoint presentation, and also to sit down with you at a later date and time to have my questions answered.
Absolutely. I would love to do that, and I will send you the PowerPoint right away, and then any questions you have. And if there are specific questions for certain, specific departments, and if you can send them to me, I can also maybe bring one of the department heads along, you know, to address the details of any of those. So, I would really appreciate that opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Preeti, we were talking earlier tonight, so make sure that you supply all the council with the PowerPoint.
Absolutely. We'll do so.
And answer to any questions to all of us.
Absolutely.
Anything from anybody else?
I just want to say thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think this is fantastic.
You know, sometimes we get so busy that we forget all that we are doing, and, and we've come a long way, and thanks to you. We, we're doing a lot of stuff, and we need to continue.
Yeah, continue on. Preeti, great presentation. Thank you very much for the presentation.
Thank you. It was really exciting for me to gather all this together, too. So, again, thanks to every city department. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Preeti.
With that, we'll adjourn and reconvene at 7 o'clock for council meeting.